We're gonna do things a little different tonight. Uh, we got somebody to speak and not sure how long the meeting's gonna go, so we're gonna let him speak first. Uh, Mr. Jimmy Norris, if he'll come up. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jimmy. Mr. Travis Land's gonna give us a vocation in place.
As far as heads, before we come to unite and conduct business with the county, we ask that you lead us, guide us, and direct us to make the best decisions possible on behalf of the taxpayers. We ask that you continue to put your hands around Nina's family, Mandy's family, and the family of Patrick Taylor during these times. We ask all these things in your name.
Praise the Lord.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite and eternal.
Now, Mr. Norris, if you can come on up.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. You told me I noticed a little bit last minute, but, you know, we've been working on the project for the last two years and it finally kind of comes to fruition and things get going, you get excited. And these guys weren't able to get here last time, but they're here tonight. And I know you've heard me talk about them, but our friends at Tideboard are here with us tonight. And I'm gonna ask them if they will come on up. They got some news they're gonna share with you, talk a little bit about what upcoming events they have and kind of what the future looks like here in 20 County.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Travis Alphorn, all of you fellows who've been living here know me a little bit. We've been around live here the whole life. And, uh, we, uh, we just, uh, our grand opening will be... Hello, I'm sorry. Grand opening will be, uh, Friday. And, uh, we're gonna have a radio station down to help welcome us in. And we're gonna have a catered dinner, a barbecue dinner. And we're gonna have some giveaways and prizes and, uh, and I think it's from eleven to two.
Yep.
Uh, so any of you who want to come down and welcome us in live, which we'll appreciate you coming and having dinner with us. We're gonna be selling heavy equipment, uh, regular tractors and implements. And we've been, actually really been open about a month and we're doing pretty well. We appreciate, uh, business here in our area.
What brands are you selling, Mr. Travis?
We're gonna be selling all case equipment and we do take on trades, so we'll have some used equipment. But, uh, we have a construction side of it, so we don't have a lot right now. They have all the same, a couple of big pieces of equipment. We've got a large escalator there, wheel loader and, uh, support lifts. We will be doing service work also and selling parts. Actually, uh, Kirsten here, she's one of our parts people in there. We hope we can service the community just like, uh, some of the other dealerships probably look better. I think our service department will speak for itself. We've got a good crew of technicians and we are out on the job already and taking on some of the stuff that tipped and sold in our community and all and familiar. Seems to be doing pretty good, so, uh, if you would, come on out Friday and eat with us. We sure appreciate y'all talking about it.
We're right across from Melody, only 129th and South.
Chairman, I'm gonna make sure they stick to their word because I bought one of them.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, he's actually got one of ones everybody wants.
We see his voice on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would say with the chair speaking up, that they obviously got some good prices out there.
Really, it's not bad. It's not bad, knowing what I know from the other competition and all, we got some good prices.
And our goal is to be very community minded, community services is at the top of our list. The community is gonna be priority, so we wanna service y'all and help you with your funding needs. So come see us.
Well, that's terrific.
Come see y'all on Friday.
Yep, eleven to two.
Eleven to two.
Eleven to two.
Yep.
Everyone's invited.
Everyone's invited, everyone's come, we ain't gotta have food, we'll keep making money.
Women's cutting at eleven thirty with the chamber and then we'll eat and get on. And there's some good prizes, we're gonna be rolling off generators.
Mr. Chairman, I do like saying, I know a lot of these folks standing up here and obviously this dealership has been choosing to pick the good crew. So I wish you guys the best.
Thank you.
I wonder if you might see me.
Yes, we appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fleming, want to speak here, or?
Yes.
Well, we glad to have you business in the community.
Yes.
I'm out there with three, four times, the all of the time, uh, good to have you business in the community. But you said about the food, but you didn't get no price.
The food's free.
It's on us.
It's on us, we're gonna feed you.
Mr. Clowder.
Look, you said you'd throw some more again. Same thought about that.
I got two problems though, dude.
Is it two year anniversary again?
I was like, we're gonna take you while.
That ain't till November. It'll be forty-three years if you can't have.
I don't know how many plates they're gonna let you go get, you know, this is big scale.
But thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Alrighty, moving on to the next item of the approval amendments for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, record horny. Do you have any discussion, motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I have one correction to be made, please.
Yes, sir.
Um, page was reflected in the draft as page three seventy-five under general business item number seventeen. It names Danny Burnham, 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 Burnham. But it should be Dana Burnham.
Burnham.
As the home street address. E R M A N. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So would that change the BMA, do I have motion to approve?
I'll promote him. Let me correct.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have item number four and number eight for discussion. Is there any others? Seeing none. Items two, three, and five, six, and seven. Any discussion or motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, Ms. Land.
Um, yes, sir, I just, a couple of things here. Number one is on the, um, I called Mr. Alphorn, local surveyor, we have a continuing services agreement in place with him on the topo map that we talked about at last meeting. And he, he wasn't contacted to do the work, but agreed to do it for ninety-five hundred if we so choose. That's twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars cheaper than our other price. I would like to ask the board to consider, uh, that Mr. Alphorn, sure take Mr. Alphorn and Associates, do it, save us twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars. I sure don't have a problem with, I mean, I, you know, I know it seems, uh, small amounts, but, I mean, pennies a dollar, take care of yourselves, that's for real. I'd say save twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars for that project, possibly local surveyor, take you to work in the same timeline. Just, that's just number one, if the board so chooses.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm all for saving, in favor of saving money. I mean, that's the right thing to do, right thing to say. One thing I, I am sure of, that I'm ready to get started. I mean, Commissioner Hill worked hard to...
Absolutely.
To get, get that fire station underway and, um, Harris and... If it's about saving money, I'm ready to save money, but I'm ready to move forward. I was, I asked a week before last, I talked to, uh, Ted Brandon and he told me the district has been changed now. He's out and so has, so, we, we need to move forward. I told him, I said, oh, we're, we're working toward that, working toward that goal. So if it's about saving money and same thing, I'm on to it.
Yeah, 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 that's all it's about. He said he could do, do the work in, in the same timeline as, you know, what the other companies could do it for. I would probably, uh, begin to be that, mainly. It's up to the board, but I thought I'd mention that to you.
So, with that being said, do we need to change anything from what we did at the last meeting? From we did with approval for the engine, I do what I thought.
Well, you would. I spoke to Mr. Bailey and he quoted me ninety-five hundred dollars and that's what I told Mr. Land yesterday. But I don't care what you do. So here's what you're gonna need to do if you're gonna change it to Mr. Alphorn. And Mr. Land is correct, we do have a contract with Mr. Alphorn. But if you're going to do that, then you approved it in the last meeting, you need to rescind your action on that prior motion to award a task order to North Florida Professional Services and then you'll need to make a motion. You'll need to vote on that.
Two motions.
Once you voted on that, then you'll need a motion to...
Motion to rescind and a motion to approve.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, before we go there, Mr., I saw Mr. Bailey walk in. Mr. Bailey here. Mr. Bailey, would you have a problem with that? I mean, we have a good relationship with your firm as well. Would you have a problem with Mr. Alphorn going to work?
I, whatever the board, whatever the board's decision, we're gonna, we're gonna go with it.
They wouldn't put you out, uh?
No, sir.
I would make a motion that we rescind the previous one.
We have a motion to rescind the previous authorization. So, I guess it's advertised for bids?
No. No, this, this item is an entirely different item that I'm thinking Mr. Land's gonna come back to. No, what he's talking about right now is the topo work in the previous meeting.
No, I'm not, I'm not rescinding.
The topo work in the previous meeting is what he's talking about.
Okay.
So you rescind the motion to ward, um, or to approve a task order with North Florida Professional Services that occurred in your last meeting. That's your motion.
That is correct.
That's your motion.
Not a motion. To rescind that.
Motion to rescind by Commissioner Land, seconded by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries on the motion to rescind.
Now, if you'd like, I followed up with a second motion to authorize, okay, Chairman Alphorn, under our continuing services agreement, to complete that topo for ninety-five hundred. Say it right, Mr. Pramath.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, my, my second observation on that. And if we need to move this toward the end of the meeting, that's fine too, but, um, Mr. Mr. Hare knows this, but Mr. Harris is aware of this as well, but all of you board members may not be. But I have been talking to the city about potentially collaborating with their fire departments, merging with their fire department. There's, there's no administration over there, um, here recently. And with the administrators that I've met with, uh, they are very interested in sitting down and talking about merging. It's, it's a costly department, um, for the city. And I don't really know where we go from there, but I, I do know that I need some type of approval or whatnot or consensus or discussion from the board to see if there's interest from the board members to discuss possibility of merging the fire departments, city, county. There's interest on that side.
I'm all in favor of talking to them, so.
There's a lot of benefits, I don't wanna get into the, to the real nuts and bolts. That wasn't scheduled for tonight, but, you know, there's a lot of, we got a lot of stuff coming on that, our new fire station, which is nothing against that project whatsoever. But I think that for the community, with the new administration over there, the game has changed. I'm not saying I'm against that Mr. Hill's project whatsoever. I just think that they're interested in talking and we owe it to the community to sit down and see. There may not be, we may not iron out the details, but we won't really know unless we have a conversation. And I don't know if we do that in form of a workshop. I know there's a, there's a lot of history with the county and the city.
Yes, sir, and I want to address that.
Yes, sir.
And I ain't good.
Before we get, we get rid of the car down this road?
Okay.
Let me go ahead, let's deal with this that's in front of us now.
I, I agree with that.
Let's bring this towards the end of the meeting and then we'll go there.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I mentioned that again, but not being on topic.
Yeah, I just sort of address, we're addressing item number four. I'll make a motion to authorize the advertised bid design for fire station number six.
Second.
Yep.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And, Mr. Chairman, just to circle back around to what Commissioner Land was talking about with the city and all. And then, Mr. Fleming, I think right when I came on board, it was flared up again, this up and down. But I do think it's gonna be a longer conversation of...
Yeah.
What we gotta hear today. But I'm, I'm like everyone else, I'm willing to have the conversation, so. Well, we're gonna move along to, uh, item number eight, Commissioner Land.
Yeah, I just had a question. Well, um, I was looking at the invoice from the contractor and it states the haul of debris and the trash to the landfill. I'm assuming that's our landfill and to the tune of fifty-nine forty-five. I wanted to ask Mr. Harris is, that, I don't know what the unit price is and I don't know what the quantity, the two fifty is. I don't know if that's yards or cubic or tons or how many trips the landfill. I'm trying to figure out how many trips the landfill, we're talking about five dump truck loads or five hundred. I really don't know, but that, in any event, that was my first question. And my second question was, if it's lower, is that a number that we can handle with our trucks? I don't know that that particular contractor has a lot of dump trucks on site. If that's something we could do to potentially save, offer our dump trucks to save roughly six thousand bucks?
I'm gonna give you a little bit of information. I haven't seen the debris myself, okay? If it's C and D type of material, large concrete construction debris, then it won't go to our landfill and that's go to a C and D landfill. And we move it with our trucks, I have no doubt with our trucks. We typically don't step in into contracts, but we have the ability. If the board chooses to do that, I don't have any problem directing the county trucks to go pick up whatever it is and dispose of it and haul clean bill of dirt back in there. Was what occurred was when they were trenching in to put these lines in, they trench through an area that had a lot of buried debris in it. That's what happened. So they get this debris that won't be going back in the ditch. It's gonna be...
Well, it's my understanding they put concrete back in, but they can't put anything else back in.
Right, that's where I was, I read down at the bottom where it says cardboard, bed, sand, I get it. I just didn't know, number one, where, what landfill are we hauling this to? And number two, the quantity, I mean, if it's five dump trucks, can we handle that at a thousand dollar load? Or is it five hundred dump truck loads and we don't wanna touch it, let it go to the town?
Well, I had asked Tori about this earlier, is that yards or how, how to jump the yards, give you yards?
Mr. Chairman. If it was, uh, concrete and asphalt, things of that nature, land cleared debris, I mean, it's gotta go to a C and D landfill, not to a county landfill or us to haul it off, I'm saying. So it don't matter if we haul it with our trucks or not, we'd have to haul it to a C and D landfill and then pay to dispose of it. Fits metal and things of that nature and obviously probably recycled yard, but I don't really see where there's nothing that's gonna be hauled to our landfill per se that would be buried and that would go in a, in a household construction type. Probably be like that, but that's...
Yeah, I wasn't clear, I mean, I really, I mean, I read the debris, but I didn't know we were hauling it to the recycling center here in town. And it was, I could say, four dump truck loads and we could, it wouldn't inconvenience our guys to run four dump truck loads or if it's four hundred and we're hauling it to... Well, here's the problem with our dump trucks and hauling in a dump truck.
I got ones that I can tell you. Tailgates and, and beating the floors out of them.
Very nicely, the nails.
It's better to let somebody else tear their equipment up.
Very nice. Hey, I'm good with that, I just had a question.
So, uh, any other discussion on that?
No.
Can I give, can I have a motion to approve item number three?
Motion, uh, second.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Our motion carries. Moving on, constitutional officer items, Mr. Barry Baker.
This is our last, Mr. Chairman, we left at last meeting, Mr. Alphorn, to carry the information back to, to the county attorney as well as to the, uh, our all of the, uh, qualified source. For them, it's power to give, you know, a copy of the letter that they sent us on the basis that, uh, I meant to copy each one of the cases. So if you have any questions on that, it's where that, uh, we are coming in a good bit under what, obviously, I should put it for the item. And that's for the software as well, so that's not hard to read, they're gonna take, they're gonna deal with going on. Uh, one thing I did not bring to your attention on that, uh, as Vicki and I brought it to my attention, it's where that we have to, because our, our stuff is so old, we have to, to map the, the information going from one to the other, from one system to the other before we can do that or do that, we have to have someone else come in. It should be a minimal cost, but I was wondering if you could also use, uh, the class that Charles has decided to cover those costs. It should be minimal. And it just, if we're down, if we're down thirty, twenty, between thirty-five and thirty thousand dollars, a little budget.
Does that include all the, uh, modules?
It's where, it will include all the modules except that we did take out the utility billing and back post system. It does still have the utility billing, but it's not, not the back post system. We took out the cemetery track and they didn't take out what's given in the cemetery business. Uh, we also took out the sales tax and business taxes, which obviously there's a few. Uh, the others, we, we were backing out of, uh, some of the modules that we found and those that, it's where they have given us a sixty, let's say, uh, sixty thousand nine hundred dollar module. And each module we were taking out, it's where they just subtract that amount from. So it really did benefit us, that is where we'll have these. We did, I will tell you that I spoke to Sharon Jordan, because we can all use the system, it's much cheaper. Sharon is also in residence and, uh, her, so, so she may have to take in papers and training and stuff. That's where all this comes in. She's not gonna come immediately, she's kinda a busy person, she'll come at a later time. She may ask for training cost, but it's something that herself can cover, all the software can cover. And the, uh, the...
As far as training for the board, for the sheriff's office and for your office, that's all covered in that, right?
It's all in this box.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think we discussed this at the last meeting, but each one of those, like your office, sheriff's office, or the Sharon, Sharon's office, they're all standard on?
It's, it's on one system. That each, each person's is segregated out of their mind, it's not next for the sherries. It's where we have to have those things and that. It's where that we're equally being controlled with their information. The thing we're towards information is where that, that, um, it feeds into ours. And so it's where, the, the only reason that it has to, it all has to be on one C P U afforded way that it's listed down. And the reason for that is where that, like with our stuff, the board has access to read and stuff. It's where they don't have access to change the information speed on it. So, but it is where they can't set up their own, uh, their own policies, so, 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 do I have authorization to be able to use? So, so, so do I have authorization to be able to use some of it?
Well, I was just gonna ask you before that.
I would think that the data transfer would, would fall under the same type of, you know, capital thing to go with it because you gotta give it the transfer, you know, between them. So I would think that falls in the same thing.
But I mean, you're good with the, uh, single source?
Yes, sir. I went over it with Mr. Baker and staff and with Mr. Power and I'm satisfied.
Thanks, sir. I guess you need the consensus for most of what you're looking for? I have a problem. Everybody good?
Yes, sir. The, um, the other item that I had on your agenda is where that, um, at the end of the year, any excess funds that we have, it's where that it comes back and forth. This past year, due to the volume of property sales within the county, we've also had a large number of military finances, as we were trying to take advantage of the low interest rates, but they start climbing again. It's where that this year we had an excess of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. We're asking that we can retain eighty-five thousand, uh, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents to take and set up a disaster recovery site with the jail. So, so that if we were to have, um, an issue, it's where that we have a backup, if our system goes down or if we were to have a disaster within the board access, we have a backup to your system, so, so we can grow from. We had a system, uh, we had a situation today where, you know, the shares, some of the shares, uh, stuff, uh, this phone system and stuff. So it's just trying to avert situations like that. And also it would be, we would be looking to use, as part of that eighty-five thousand, we're asking for the setup of a board system for the clerk's office. And by, by going to the board system, it should save us about three thousand dollars an hour.
I was on the phone with you, we were talking about...
So, so just trying to...
So this is just backup servers, is that what we're doing here or backup?
Backup servers and racks and switches and all that.
So, if you have failure in one place, it, it falls over to this? And that's for the whole, is that just for the clerk's office or is that covering anybody else or?
It's where this is the clerk's and the sheriff's.
I think the way I understood it, you chairman, that there's some kind of catastrophic failure, there's some miles of downtown, things back up here.
It's where that we have to maintain a, a, an all site that's seventy miles away and the sheriff has to have his within the state of Florida. Can't put outside of the state of Florida, what is it, do you do? But if we had a backup system, whether we could go to there in a short time, we could, we could back up and run and have the stuff, especially a lot like your, uh, your, uh, your system with your, your nine one one or something like that. It's, it's necessary, especially a lot like with all these officers and people, you know, they're trying to run on that. All that is controlled by, by their smart system and it would also be...
So is that us installing all that or do you have an outside contractor doing that or?
It's where, I don't know, Miss Vicki, speak to all of that, that is where that...
Do you open that?
Again, Mr. Gary.
I'm doing alright, so what was your question?
Are we installing this backup system or is it, we're getting a contractor to do that? Or is this just eighty-five thousand for equipment to do it with?
No, sir, what we're looking to do is utilize some of the older, uh, equipment that we have. We do have good equipment, however, it just comes out of warranty. There's no reason not to continue to use it, it's just like if we have an old tractor, it's still gonna give you good use. It's just a backup until we can get the front end back up again. Especially if we're gonna be going to A D G and we're gonna have the whole county pretty much touching that. It has to be up twenty-four seven. Our administrator may send out a crew in the middle of the night and they need to be able to put their time in, they started, undone. So, and that's the other thing that is against us and to have a disaster recovery site. At least at that point, if something happens in the main days, uh, we can switch it over and be back up within just a few hours instead of days.
My question is just the eighty-five thousand dollars I'm getting to. If, if we're using a lot of our old equipment, I mean, where, where are we spending eighty-five grand?
So what we need right now is to bring a network over there, which will certainly allow us to be able to start that process. And what we'll be able to do is bring that unit up with a ten gig backbone instead of the one gig that we have. Because like I said to you, there's a huge amount of people that are gonna have to hit that unit now. And that would hit us from the main, uh, switch room, which is my data center, to the new location. And then that would give us the rocks that we need to get back out to the gallon, which we have filed on the ground already all the way to the building department, which if it fire up or if we need to. And then that way we can bring everybody into the fold.
I'm not really on it, I'm just, I just want the public to understand where we're spending money at.
Yeah, I T is nothing different than plumbing or electricity.
Exactly. Exactly.
I just make ones and say, there's going a certain direction. Or sit still, or move out.
I think the question was, does that price include the installation?
Right.
Yes, sir, we would be putting that in.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. That's something we were doing, is without just purchasing equipment, or?
We would be able to do that, absolutely. Both areas got, you know, a huge load department now. Instead of just one or two people running around, we got some help out there.
Great, that's, that's all I'll do. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you.
The eighty-five thousand, it does take in, as the OIB system is where for the cost. So if y'all were to allow us to do that, it's the amount of, we would be returning to, it would be a hundred and seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars a night if I saw. If we're allowed to use those.
Any questions for Mr. Baker on that? Y'all good with that? Do you need a mo, do we need, need just a consensus?
For the purposes of research, you may, if you have to, it'd be better if you have a motion, they could be reflected in the minutes.
Motion, Mr. Baker. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Mr. Baker, you got your money. Moving on to item number ten, consideration of its potential participation in statewide settlement within Doe Health Services and Pharmacy as a manufacturer of opioid drugs. We're back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're back with another settlement, a portion of the opioid suits that are going around. This one is going to happen a little bit quicker than some of the others may happen. It's happening with Endo, and they're trying to get all of this done by the end of February, so they can actually start making dispersments in April and May of this year. Of course, it's going to have enough people, you know, participate in to finalize the settlement, but our outside counsel has recommended that we join in. This is part of the State of Florida resolution. And also I've asked that, since they'll be notifying and having folks that are going to be authorized to do the documents with it, that you'd also authorize me to sign the participation agreement and the related documents.
You need a motion, or?
I need two motions.
Two motions.
One to accept, and second to authorize me to execute.
Mr. Charlie, motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries to the second part.
Make a motion to authorize county attorney Mr. Prabat to execute the associated documents. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, that's all, aye?
Thank you, Mr. Prabat. Moving along to general business, item number eleven, discussing possible board action award to bid in County Road one thirty-seven, utilities. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you've got, I believe, all of the information that you need to make the decision. We went to bid on this, bids were opened on January the eighteenth. You've got a tabulation sheet in there that shows the three prices they've received. This is for utilities, water and sewer that we run on down one thirty-seventh from our plants. Our initial customer will be Trulie, but we're going to continue with those services to the wellburned side of I-ten. So in here, in fact, this is going to be funded with a combination of ARPA funds and Trulie funds, we have an agreement with them. In any event, we provided the bid results on the tabulation sheet, and then we sent a question out asking if the bidders could meet the timeline that was specified in the bid spec that was sent out. North Florida sent that letter out to all the bidders, you've got the responses on the second page, and then you have attachments that are rolled out in that letter, well, all of the responses from the companies. In addition to that, you've got pertinent pages from the bid specifications, the invitation to bid, follows out the number of days, a lot of the project, there's other information on them, in there on when it needs to start, latest it can start, commencement dates, and that type of information. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we just need the board to make a decision on selecting a contractor, awarding contract. And, and Mr. Prabat, can we do it?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Harris. This is an apples to apples bid, everybody's bidding on the same thing, on the same.
Everyone bid the same thing.
Same pipe, same fittings, same?
That's correct. In fact, they turned their bids in on the bid tabulation sheets that were provided in the bid spec package. I think one of them may have turned their price in on an earlier form, but the only difference with that form and the one that was sent out in an addendum was there was a minor typo, I think one letter was missing. But otherwise, they all used the same forms and responded to the bids.
Another question on this is, how does change orders handle in a deal like this? When you bid this like this, and they come up and start the job, whatever happens, how does, how do you, how do you come up with approving or not approving? I know, I know we have to approve the change orders, but what I'm saying here is, we got one, we got three bids here, I'm just, I just don't want to come up with a low bid and then come up with a bunch of change orders after that. So how does the county handle that, Mr. Board?
Typically, what would occur is, we have an inspector on site, and then we have a consulting engineer that designed this project. On this project, we'd also have, at some point, we're going to come back in here, we've got this contract with Dewberry or CBI. So they would be observing what's going on out there, how we're inspecting the works for us as an employee out there. And the engineers that designed the project would be involved if there's a proposed change order. Well, everyone has to sign off on it and agree. If they all agree that that work needs to be done, it's assembled on the change order document, brought back to the board for consideration.
But it would be items and work outside the scope of the original bid, is what that would be for, if it was in the original layout.
Well, it might be outside the scope, but it might be necessary due to something they run into. I'll give you an example on what we're working on Y B U S ninety, the other side of I-ten, for the catalyst site. There were some, they got in there digging, that you have to certify that you've identified all of the utilities and everything involved before you start the project. And that was done. But when they got out there and started digging, trying to set, I think, some ditch bottoms and some pipes and some other things, all of a sudden, there was a four inch or six inch metal conduit out there, or some type of conduit, that no one was aware of. And in that particular case, an adjustment had to be made, in elevations and some other things. So that came back to us on a change order, whatever the expense was that was associated with that had to be considered by the board. Also, those types of things happen.
Does this come under the Davis Bacon Act as well? Is this?
The specifications included Davis Bacon, the American Steel, and there's another minority employment piece of that as well.
That's all covered in that?
It's all in the bid specification.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I understand Mr. Harris correctly, he doesn't anticipate any change orders within this bid, other than some unexpected.
At this time, I do not. Now, again, I will confess, I'm not the design engineer, but North Florida looked at it closely, went out there, did what they needed to do. At this time, I do not have any reason to believe that anything additional or extra will be needed, with that exception that there may be some unforeseen things out there in the ground or something that has to be moved, that I'm not aware of.
I mean, I think, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think, I mean, you were headed down the right path there, and I agree with you. This is a big project for the county to tackle by ourselves, without any other revenues, forms of grants or whatnot. I think it's going to make sure we got the right, first time, you know, as we get hit with a million, million five, or something change order, that could be catastrophic to our fiscal budget that particular year, without any backup source, funding source from state or feds.
Well, I can speak to that, if that's actually the question. These are ARPA funds, and we have plenty of ARPA funds. Now, I'm not suggesting that they should be used.
Right.
But we have them as a backup source if something were to occur. This is clearly an approved project. In fact, more recently, I got an opinion from neighbors, Givlin, Niggerson, Tallahassee, the Gibson opinion before, because of the new guidance that came out on that funding, which I think I talked with a few of you about, but anyway, I reached out to them. So we would have those funds. We only, we've only received, I think, half of the funds, so we still have the other half that will come sometime later this year.
My only concern, I just want to make sure we're pretty close on the number, that's where I'm at. And I get it, when you get out there, there's always things, just like you had the change order a while ago from the discovered landfill you found, you know? I mean, I understand that, but as far as the actual project itself, are we comfortable with these numbers, especially the low bid?
Maybe the best first answer, that would be our engineer.
Well, that was where I was.
They're here.
Bailey, would you mind speaking to this?
Name one of your experts, Greg.
We're invited, no, for professional services. We prepared the documents, we had three bids, we had three licensed contractors bid on it. All three have a history of doing satisfactory work. I have no information on my end to disqualify any three of them. Could they make a mistake in their bid? Absolutely, we're all human, but it's not something that I can lay my finger on. We've gone back and reviewed all the numbers. There's nothing that, that I could, I can see as evident. Sometimes we find math errors, we didn't find any of that. So my position is, is we've got three valid bids.
I just want, y'all do the layout work, am I correct in that? I mean, who lays out the project to put out the bid? Like for all the materials, fittings?
We prepared the construction plans, we provided all the bidding information for them to complete their bid.
And you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, we checked behind ourselves, we have other people review documents, that didn't prepare them in the process, but we're looking at, you know, we might give you a space. Again, we are human, but we try to make sure that we check and recheck and make sure that everything is good. We know, you know how far we're running the line, so we can easily look and see whether, you know, they only show a hundred foot of pipe, and we got miles of pipe, you know, something like that.
That's right.
And it was running a water name and running a steel name.
Anybody else?
I, so all the material, same material, every day. The job be done.
Yes, sir.
It's not a big difference yet, but.
We don't control bids. I tell you, I've seen bids go swing widely, I've seen them be real tight, and I've seen them all over the place. I've seen spreads of two and three times. I can't explain it to you. Well, I just want to make sure we're good with it, that's all.
Mr. Chair, I think, you know the project, you laid it out for us, and is there anything crazy that's going to catch us off guard that you know of, other than I understand there's a delay in everything right now, in products and things like that, that's a whole other.
That's where the thing's at right now. It's a supply chain issue that we're having across the board, trying to get materials in time and manner, like don't matter if you're building a building, or laying a pipe, or putting asphalt in. Right now, safety is an issue across the whole, not even just our industry, but just in any, any industry that we're in. You know, go to the grocery store, see grocery stores, shelves, anything, so. I think that's, that's the main difference you've got in all this.
And saying that, the only thing I could see was thinking was, you know, maybe it's a certain pipe fitting that you, you know, require that needed to be there, but maybe they make a different style to become available, it's more expensive, and something like that may alter.
For the most part, we perform specs, so they have options available to them. There are certain things that we spec, this has PVC pipe on it, it's just routinely used in the industry. It's, the fittings are pretty, normally easy to get, there are other things that you can do, typically more expensive. So we rely upon what we think is the most cost effective and quickest that we can get. It may not be quick enough to see everybody leave, but the quickest that we can acquire.
And I would give it as a reason why I mention that, is in my industry, the forest business, you can't get a, you know, expensive set of brakes, but you can get all the expensive brakes that you want.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Anybody else need to ask, just tell anybody? Thank you, appreciate you. Well, without being said, is there any more discussion on this? Are we ready to make a motion?
I mean, the only thing, we just talked about, I would mention, I mean, obviously there's been some discussion and question of timeline, but, you know, I don't believe that we can all control that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to kind of take it all in, but I would, I would like to ask, I believe I see some representatives from a couple of different companies here, if any one of them would like to speak on their behalf, be more than welcome to at this time, before we make a decision as a board.
Yes.
So that's.
Do you very help?
There's, I just, it's up to you. I just wanted to, like, make them welcome, but they can, you know.
I agree.
But there's something that's discussed, if they, they should know about it, I mean, now's the time to speak up. Other than, other than that, I mean, the way it works, if we got competitive bids, I mean, we have to go, all we have to do contractors, I mean.
So we're district boss, man?
Everybody's always looking at the shoebox, is when things like this happen.
I'm good, buddy.
I'll go ahead and just spit it out there for you. I'm in favor of the low bid.
I'm the froggy guy. I get accused of being the penny pincher a bunch, I'm, I'm in favor of it, so.
I'm supporting that.
And I'll just, with that, I agree, I mean, the two bids were very, were much closer than the one bid, and I'm reading what they say about the timelines and things like that, that's, I think you're one of being honest, and I can appreciate that. But at the end of the day, it's typically been the board's directions to take the low bid, as long as all the eyes are down in the teacher's court. If I'm wrong, definitely, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion, please. I move to accept the low bidder on tabulation bid number twenty-two, there's zero five, one hundred and six collection, transition to.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton.
If you would in the motion, would you name the contractor, please?
Oh, sorry. Music Construction has the low bidder.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Item number twelve, discussing possible board action, also surplus parcel, ID number fifteen oh two S dash twelve E, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a piece of property that you had to have a brought on on a tie. Tiebreaker. They came to you previously. So, that occurred and these are the results of that tiebreaker. You just need to make that.
That's pretty simple to explain before.
Take the high number or the low number?
Mr. Chairman, I think the commission go to the highest offer number.
Offer number 20.
We got the number 40, yes.
That's where we don't follow Commissioner Land, right? On the low number.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries for offer number 40. Item number 13, discussing possible court, court action. Award of bid number 2022-08 Timber Harvest.
Here's where we go high.
Mr. Chairman, are you addressing that?
I can. This is the results of bids that we received on the per ton prices for maybe timber that's on the fire station site for pulpwood and chips and shipments all. I'll be honest with you, just like the next item, I'm surprised that we didn't have more responses because we called several companies and there were some that gave us every impression that they were going to respond, but they didn't. So, we have two here. We have one that's higher than the other.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that, I mean, I spoke to several of these guys also and I'm sure it's too. The only trouble is some of those had, they wanted to bid with the timeline. They got so much wood vault right now because the prices are high. Was trying to get it out there ninety days. That might be why some of them wanted to buy it, but it was the timeline to get it out, but we still got two very respectable bids there. I believe both of them have offices or bases, if you will, shops locally.
And it's a small track.
And it's a small track. It's not your ideal wood skittery.
Still, still not a bad price for a small track.
I would keep it short and I'd move to accept a high bidder, Shake Timber LLC for tabulation bid number 2022-08.
One second.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number 14, discussing possible board action award of bid 2022-09 Clearing Grubbing Future Fire Selection. Mr. Chairman.
Same property, different process, clearing stops out, roots and debris. I will point out there, this is a typo. Got the wrong word on it on the tabulation page. We only got one bid on this, which really shocked me. And it wasn't pulpwood, it was actually for clearing grubbing, but that is the correct price that was turned in with that bid.
Is there an option for us to do this work?
Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you that we have the ability, like I said before, but in this particular case, your crews are stretched right now. I mean, we're working on a long list of road projects, still trying to put that second crew together, waiting for some of the equipment. You've got one crew that handles ditching right away. If we go out there and try to perform this work, it's probably gonna cost the same, but it's gonna take away from projects that our people would be working on right now if you have a county.
That was my concern on that. Yeah. Mr. Chairman. I don't disagree with, I agree with both of those guys. My only concern is, is, I mean, I, I remember the Mizell building or Survivor selections, we only have one bid on the sheetrock. When you get one bid, you really don't know if it's a good deal or you're getting robbed. You know, you don't know, you just don't know. But I do know that the guys in this type of business are overwhelmed. I mean, they're.
So, it is worth a high price.
I, I thought it was actually reasonably high, but I don't have a second bid to compare it to. And, you know, I know historically, when there was, has been a bid in the past, we, the board, previous boards agreed to back up and punt, but, you know, when time crunches here and the park kind of cruises or overextended already, I mean, I, it's just decision board made.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you that we bid this for thirty days. If board wants to bid it for thirty days, I'm fairly confident it'll take that long to get those trees out of there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, can't do this to trees, buddy.
Right. So, if you choose to do that, you put it back, I mean, in this case, the bid spec is already written. It's just up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, where are we? I mean, a lot of these guys cannot look at DemandStar. I don't look at DemandStar, but is, what avenues are we getting this particular bid like this out? Because these are, this is all, they'll be local contractors.
You can run in the newspaper, it's on the county website, it's on DemandStar. We also called, all the people that you told us to call, we called. And then, I don't remember the name of the company that Commissioner Fleming and I ran into out there the day that we were there, but there were people that were aware of it and that we spoke to. And like I said, just like what previous bid, we thought from everything that they had told us that we were gonna have bids from them and then we just didn't receive them.
One of the problem with that high price is, and I don't know if you're gonna get it a whole lot cheaper because it's such a small track and there's just their mobilization to get very good back and it's, uh.
I think that's why.
If it was a larger track, you probably wouldn't see that. You'd probably see more bidders as well, but it is what it is. So, I mean, I'm good with it. I mean, I, we can leave it out there for longer if you'd like. See what, see if somebody wants to come in.
Well, it isn't out there now. It's closed. So, if you're going to do that, you have to authorize us to go back to bid and we would re-advertise and go back through the same process for thirty days. It's up to you.
Well, I don't see the harm in putting it out there for another thirty days if it's gonna take that long to get the timber out.
Mr. Chairman, anyway, I wouldn't. I can understand, I would just, just gonna move forward. I know it, it is kinda expensive, but the crew that said if they would do it, they may want to pull out. You know, I mean, while we're not locked in, they might go and do that still, yeah. You hear what I'm saying?
Kind of the huge, Mr. Chairman, and I know we've done it before, but I think we've done a knock of the bids, just returned the bid and we, an issue that since we opened this?
Well, we have really large items. We only get one bid. Very often we'll, I mean, if it, engineers involved, we think it's gonna be a million dollar project or more. Yeah. Very often we won't open those and just go back and forth and say, okay, we haven't opened them, what do you want? We didn't anticipate this to be a million dollar job. So, give them one bid.
I'll do what the board wants to do. I'm, I don't know a lot about that cost there. I mean, probably legal, you just provide for, you get a little more knowledge of it and then we're gonna say a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars.
Whether it be in a small track, it's just kinda hard to nail it down. It can be all over the place. Normally, clearing and doing that kinda work, thousand, twelve hundred dollars maker, maybe fifteen hundred maker is where that would usually come in at. I feel above that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harris, I don't have copies of these bids specs, but did this number include, I know it's clearing and grubbing, but does this include de-stomping and like harrowing, leveling, so we get a flat, so, all that? Is it just popping stumps and running them?
No, it was, it was removal of roots and everything.
So, and then doing some type of harrowing and dragging and leveling to stomp them back out, right? So, we left with a pretty much flat, right?
I wish I could tell you. I can't remember the spec on all these things. I know it was a very costly one, but I just don't.
It includes all that, I'm a little more comfortable with it. Yeah.
I mean, clearly the work isn't getting this done right now.
We got time. I mean, it's not on cutting trees probably out. I mean, I ain't talking to them. We just, you know, we got sixty days, I believe, to cut with sixty to remove the trees.
I think we put sixty in there, I believe. So, I mean, there's time to bid if you want to. If you go with this number, you can go with this number.
Is it a long effort to redo it? Just one of my.
Not since the spec is written. I mean, it'd be just a matter of re-advertising and putting it back out there. Mr. Chairman, once we're having a part of the discussion there again, I'd like to ask if they're representative of that company, if they'd like to speak, like, hear from them.
Yes, sir. Is there anybody here from Creative Concrete Design of Plumia County?
I mean, I'm fine with doing, I'm supportive of whatever you go with. I just.
Well, sometimes you don't, you live by the bid, you die by the bid and they put in a bid and so that's where it's, uh, but, you know, I don't know if you keep on doing that. I don't know. I, I just, I think it could be cheaper, but I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up with that. The only problem that I got with putting it back out there is this guy's number, his already there. So, to maintain the integrity of the bid and his number, he put the effort in, he bid it. I mean, I think he's probably five to seven thousand high, but we're putting his number on the street and now he's gotta be, he gotta beat it.
And that's our concern with, with recovery.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'd just assume, just go ahead and go with it to maintain the integrity of the money.
Motion.
Motion, good. I'd be in the seventh.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Is there any additional items that we have discussed? Public concerns and comments? Is anybody from the public black speak? Seeing none? We're back. Anything else?
No, sir. I'm just wondering if we were gonna be dropping back to.
Oh, that's right. We gotta drop back to Commissioner Land's field here.
All right. Don't punch me in the face, Mr. Fleming. I don't have to.
That's all good.
I can't speak to the past, but I can respect Mr. Fleming and some of the punches he's probably taken in the past. But what I would say to that is, I would, I would ask the board not to hold the current administrators or administration responsible or hostage for other actions. However, that being said, there's a long history of this discussion across county and the city. No group has ever been able to get it done due to whatever reason. I, I would say just personalities or politics, whatever you wanna call it, but I got, I have details, I wanna get into them, but I, I just think that we owe it to the community to try to pull off a potential merger. It helps the city. The city has a ladder truck. We could use a ladder truck. It's very lightly used. I mean, they're less than ten structure fires annually, so any of their equipment is, I mean, they go to a few structure fires and fender, fender benders. I say fender benders because most of the speed limits inside the city limits are fairly low. But it's up to the board. I mean, I'm not trying to take away from Commissioner Hales' project whatsoever. He's worked hard for that. Brandon, Bradley, all worked hard for that. It's not taking light away from that. There's another opportunity that presented itself and I'll take full blame for being the one to reach out to the city. I did that on my own and the light bulb went off for me. This one we were kicking around, we were talking about, but I think the whole board agreed at the time that when they were discussing two million dollar fire station, I was like, whoa, there gotta be a better way than a two million dollar structure. I know that number's come down, it's gonna stand. But I, I reached out to the city and I, I spoke to them and I've met with them over the last month and a half. There's, there's interest on their side of the fence to sit down and, and help them. I mean, they're, it's simply secret. I mean, you can, I've looked at their budget. I took it and went through it and, I mean, they're, they're pulling money and have been for years out of their enterprise funds to fund fire and police. Meanwhile, I'll use Helenson and Newball as an example. I mean, they're wanting us to pave our road to the city limits, but their infrastructure's falling apart just because they're, they're using the departments that are generating revenue to subsidize the ones that aren't, but, you know, to provide that service. I think it could be a win-win for our community. I think we could probably do both projects. I say both projects. It's project and this merger, collaboration, whatever you wanna call it. It's up to the board. I mean, I'm just one guy sitting up here, but I did feel obligated to go tell you guys on the conversations with them and see what you want me to do because there is interest on their side to try to sit down and look it out. I don't know if we do that in the public. I mean, I haven't talked to any councilmen or anyone like that, but in order for us to do that, we have to do it publicly. So, y'all, whatever y'all wanna do.
I'm all in favor of having a discussion about that. I've always asked for mine. If we couldn't have one fire department versus two in town, why would it just, it don't make any sense to me.
I, I'll share some quick numbers with you that I, on some research that I did. I got with, what I did is I pulled, I, I went to them and I pulled their, I got my numbers from their, their, my residential units from their water meters. And I got there, I backed into the number on their commercial square footage by dividing the rate by the annual revenue that's collected on the commercial side. If I use, if, if we use, if we were to do something, I'm gonna give you the number that the revenue county's assessments would generate using city numbers. So, by my, by my calculation, in the city's calculation, there's approximately three million sixty-three thousand commercial square footage in the city. At twelve cents a square foot, that's three hundred and sixty-seven thousand and some change. There's two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight residential water meters in the city. At a hundred and thirty, that's three hundred and six thousand and some change. You add those two together, you get about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annual revenue generated by assessments. That number differs a little bit from the property praiser, so I went for the property praiser, I did the same thing. I said, hey, can you give me the square footage on commercial inside the city limits? Can you give me residential units inside the city limits? And I ran the same number using county's assessment rates and that number comes up seven hundred and seventy-two thousand revenue generated by city limit, inside the city limits using county's current fire assessments. So, I mean, it's not like we would take it over without any revenue generated. I mean, we would have to implement on our end, the county assessments inside the city limits to, to help fund that particular department or the department in whole. I mean, it goes along.
Does the city not charge the fire assessment?
They do. They do. It's, it's on their water bills through, uh, through that department. They charge it monthly. I don't remember those rates. I didn't write those down, but they would have an assessment. And, and it's about, if we, if, if the, and I will tell you this, if it's, if the county's, the residential county, I didn't do commercial, but if the residential, I said that's right. Residential units inside the city and then it's where to get a county assessment, it's like a dollar or two dollar increase than what they're currently paying on the city's assessment. So, it's not like we're gonna stick it to astronomically increase what they're already paying on residential assessment now, two dollars more a year. But, very again, those are just numbers. It's not like.
Their operating budget is how much?
This current fiscal year, their operating budget is one million three hundred and fifty-six thousand this year. Last year was one point two and some change. Now, I, that number, in my opinion, that number, the total assets on their books, two point five two zero, so two million five hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and eight dollars at the time that I pulled their budgets and their ground sheets. That includes the station and all the equipment. I think we could negotiate not purchasing the station as part of their to the square. As part of, that's part of their CRA master city project. I think we, I think we could lease the building for minimal annual rate and do like a triple net leg lease where we're responsible for the air conditioner, everything, both the ground type cells outside this low beam structure. So, if you're looking at equipment and the cost of operating the department, but it's just some two days worth of research. I'm one guy. I think, I know Mr. Fleming's got a lot, he can give us some history back on that, but I think it's worth the discussion to see if we can, can try to do both of these.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I don't have, I don't have a problem with having a discussion. We've had discussions, but the discussion was just canceled. We've had discussions, but the discussion was just canceled. Just bummed, it blew apart, but we had some figures. Where the county, the city was saving money, three, four million dollars. And they were made from that. We had some, uh, across the tracks, we, just, we had, there was so much out there, uh, I don't wanna put this here as one spot, and, uh, Lake Fire Chief, he's, he had had one of them, he had, got given all those numbers, and, um, it was, it was very funny. But for some reason, it didn't work. I know there was a ladder truck, but that truck, that big truck, you don't have to pack building for that, that big truck. I think we talked about lease for a good amount of time, that didn't work, uh, it wasn't work. And all we was trying to do was to provide services outside of the truck. If there were a fire structure, uh, someone got in a very bad accident, the fire rescue could come and take care of that situation. And it never occurred, and, and I mean, it was just, uh, just chaos, and I, 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 I will listen to them, listen to this side of the story, but I, again, I'm stressing this. We need to get a fire station on the other side of the tracks, but now they wanna talk about this, about that process again, but if we get it done, I don't have a problem with that.
No, this isn't a stall tactic on my part, but.
So, by the way, I understand, we, we silently keep working on the, the project, Mr. Hale has spent a lot of time in church.
Yeah, all of us did, I mean.
And, 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 and it was about saving lives. That was where, that, that's where we're at. We were about saving lives and, um, Walmart, all businesses south of town. And the response time coming out rest of town, it was a, a, chief could tell you, it was a, it was a loss of time. Out of town, I mean. There was a gentleman came in and spoke against it. We didn't have lady, who was gone. He had, had a heart attack. Two blocks from that fire station, 'cause they don't, they don't carry a license, the chief didn't want to let. They don't have the license. They couldn't bring him and take care of the situation. Chief called me and told me what had happened. And I felt bad. People all around us, in the city of Bible, we need some, please in here. And, and, and what you're saying is very valuable, if it works, I hope, pray that it will work after we get ours online. But, uh, again, I said to them, listen. I don't wanna get engaged in anything that's heavy, and I'm not saying that there's a stall tactic. But, I don't want to try to prevent any loss of life down in this state. It's needed, needed in that, and you know, south of town.
I, I mean, I agree with everything you said. I will add to that, um, in the, you know, in the event of saving lives, two blocks from that station, our, our new station north of town, isn't it gonna make that situation any better than it apparently is? If we are able to merge, I mean, we, 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 the county tried to park an ambulance over there, but I don't remember how long, chief, a month, three months?
It lasted about five months.
Okay, six months, and it just didn't work out. So, what, what, what the, what the people of the city get, and they're Swan Countyans too, and they pay Swan County out of world taxes just like the rest of us. What is, what the people of the city get is they, and, and the people close to that station, whether they're north of the tracks, especially north of the tracks, because if there's a train there, that's what this is all about, of providing service north of the tracks, because the county doesn't have a man stationed out that way, and the, the tracks block. But what is, what the, what the city residents get is north of the tracks and even east of town, faster response time on that ambulance, because if it's county operated, I mean, we're gonna have the ambulance at that station. That's staff, so that particular gentleman, two blocks away, there's an ambulance sitting there, two blocks away, whereas now, if we, if we don't do anything, that ambulance is still coming from, it's three point two miles from that ambulance to the entrance to our new station. And, and, you know, another quarter of a mile back there, so he gets two blocks versus three and a half miles for a rescue, or, you know, from the airport, I don't know what that mileage is, two miles, two and a half miles, I'm guessing, but he gets two blocks. If we can do it, I mean, I'm just looking at the community in whole, and the benefits. That ladder truck, I mean, Allen Park's in my district, they have expressed concerns, county done that ladder truck. And I got a lot of senior citizens stacked in multi-story buildings out there that are immobile, and I mean, we, we gotta, not that, the city, city fire truck park at that station would get there any quicker if we had it, 'cause it's possible, I don't know where it would be, but the density of elderly people, immobile elderly people, you know, I think it's three or four story building out there, very high.
I don't know, is that something you guys, I, I, Mr.?
Sure.
I don't, is, is the city council talking about this, or you just bringing it up? Do they even know that this is being out here?
I, I believe that the administrator, I've spoken to the administrator, the mayor, and Mr. Croft, and all three of them were in support of. Now, if they went back and talked and spoke to councilmen, I would have think that they would have mentioned it somewhat, somewhat, but I haven't spoken very little to councilmen.
So, I think tonight, you were just wanting to bring to our attention that discussions are being had and moving.
If you guys want me to cease and desist, or?
No, I, I don't, because I'm gonna tell you, if it's all about the, the protection and the betterment of the community, whether it be the people in the city or the county as a whole, I'm on board for it. If, if it's a, you know, just a desperate move or something on someone's part, then, you know, we gotta look at it, we gotta look at the cost to us and to our staff and things like that. Can our fire and rescue benefit from having those folks onboard, uh, with extra employees? That's the things that need to be discussed.
Absolutely, and I think that, you know, we're not gonna solve this here tonight, and if you're coming, this is me speaking, if you're coming to the board to talk to me about entertaining the idea of, of expanding our fire and rescue, uh, and maybe helping out the citizens of the city and lava, I'm on board with that. I could, I could support that, along, like you said, Fleming, I mean, we've got previous board members worked hard on other fire stations as well, and I know you say you're not trying to delay or do anything with that, but I think we need to let them get their ducks in a row and, and maybe present us with something, or if you wanna be them. Yeah, I just don't wanna spend too much more time talking to those guys and get a stiff arm from my, my board. I mean, then I'm just wasting my time, but if there's interest in you guys hearing it, I mean, I can continue to talk with them, and, and I can involve Mr. Harris and the chief, I mean, the three of us, we're not, we can meet with them together. As long as no councilman are there, because it could be a matter that they would vote on as well, so, I mean, I could, I could get our guys, and we could meet with their guys, and, and and try to get some more ironed out details, and then keep, keep coming back to you guys, I mean, if that's the way, I don't know how nice it'd be.
I wouldn't have been wrong, yeah, as, as Mr. Fleming was, but when I'm coming into it, I think the fire was dying down on it, but it was still enough that I got roasted, you know?
Well, I may get it too, I mean.
And, and it was one of the things, it was, just to be blunt, it was the, it was certain, uh, council members that wanted, and some that didn't, and a fire chief that didn't at the time. And, you know, it was just in the crosshairs, it was just one of the things, but if everybody's on board, and they're, they're working towards a common goal, then I don't know what we can, this discussion's longer. As long as it's a win-win, I don't see what the problem is in discussing.
Right.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
It benefits both sides at some point here, and they agree to it, we agree to it. I just, I, you know, I just think we're helping, we're just helping the citizens of this county, and it, it just makes sense to talk about it. At least talk about it, and see if we can come to a mutual agreement to where it makes sense for everybody.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I'll say this when we do it. You have a lot of pain and a lot of grief, and, uh, a lot of business. Now, if you talk to them again, let them decide, let us know how they, they got a fire chief, we got a fire chief, they got fire, uh, they're not paramedics. They gotta be, they gotta be trained to be paramedic.
They're all, they're all firefighter EMTs, but they're not paramedics. They would have to, if they wanted to stay employed with us, if we did it, they'd have to obtain a certain amount of time.
How would that, yeah, a certain amount of time, how would that play out, how would that come into play when, when, if there were a merge? Which I wish, it would be a great thing to merge, that would be the right thing to do, a committee to decide, and then I was thinking about, you got Spirit's One out there, you know, a lot of stuff, entertain them. Everything is north of town, so I would, uh, entertain, again, that.
I mean, I would, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would request it, just hearing them talk and say, and some, you said you talked to their chief, I mean, definitely, there's gonna be a lot more of it than just us, our attorneys, our chief, our administrators, their administrators, I mean, there's a lot to be. Mr. Revat, you want to say something?
I just was gonna make a suggestion as we're going through the, you know, potential for the talks. One of the things you might wanna do is get agenda topics, so that we can be discussing those agenda topics, and they can be doing the same, so we can have the information gathered together before we try to schedule a workshop, so we won't just get a workshop together as a, what do y'all think?
So, I can go back and tell them, hey, our board's entertained and are interested in listening to it. Talk to your board and give us, get you an agenda item to discuss your concerns, issues, do's, don'ts, whatever you wanna call them. Bring this back to us, then we'll have an agenda item to discuss, and I can tell what are and aren't.
Mr. Chairman.
I know you got a sore throat, but it's been a few years, not working it out.
Might not be working either.
Um, I lived through that, um, last conversation. Let me say first of all, I'm convinced that we're dealing with a different group of people today. I'm encouraged by that. Um, I've had good conversations with Mr. Curtis on a number of things, and I'm anticipating that that will continue. The county at the time that we had the last conversations on this, um, had actually put together a plan that he offered to the city. We didn't get a response back on the different pieces of that plan. What Commissioner Hale alluded to a moment ago was, if they've got a plan they wanna share with us, I think that'd be wonderful. Now, what might be helpful, I can go back through, 'cause I still have that information that we put together at the time. Um, I can make a list, rather than just arbitrarily asking the question, y'all started dealing with some agenda items and what would be the same. We can just create the list, they can add to it, they can take away from it. We can see what their position is on any number of those items that are on that list that we dealt with before. One was taking the employees, hiring all of them, giving them time to get certified, covering all that expense. Um, one spoke to the building over there, the other on the equipment, and all the key pieces. So, I can put that information together, we can share that with them, if you wanna share with them.
Yeah, just get that to me, and then that'll be a starting point for me to, you know, hey, here's some issues we need to, we need a hammer to top down.
They also have, they also have a fire study, fire rate study that they conducted after we had this meeting with them. On which they now have a rate space, so you can get a copy of it and see, and maybe closer numbers, just to begin with.
Mr. Mayor, what?
Just naming address, or would you? Bowhead, sixty-one thirty-five Wigan Road.
Retired fire chief.
My only concern with all of this is y'all are now telling the county commissioner to go talk to the city. But where's the city in all of this? I, I mean, Travis is to be commended for this, I mean, I, that's not an issue. I'm wondering where the transparency is. One of the big issues that was before was who came up with this? Was it the city, was it the county? And y'all were shooting at each other. You kept missing because nobody would take credit where it started initially.
I'll take blame.
No, 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 this is back in the history. You, you were there, Bill. But back then, but now, you're doing it again. Again, our efforts is to be commended.
I agree with that.
Y'all ought to be commended, but I think you need this to set your talking points up to start with, and then have a workshop. I mean, that's where, I think you need to be. That's where you need to be. Because if you're gonna send Travis over, and he's gonna talk to them, and they're gonna come back, and he's gonna have, nobody's gonna make a decision. Y'all are gonna have to sit down at a public meeting. If they, the politicians have changed, the times have changed, it may be, be time to do something like this. I would encourage you, put it out there, let the public see y'all, hey, are discussing.
I thought that's what we were doing, now.
No, you're doing it here. Where's the city? How many people from the city are here?
And that was my concerning question I just asked Mr. Lynn, was the city aware?
The city asked me.
To have these discussions.
Yes, the city asked me in my two-hour meeting with them two weeks ago, hey, this was the Wednesday after our last board meeting, so I couldn't talk about it to y'all on Tuesday, 'cause a meeting that occurred on Wednesday morning at Mr. Curtis's office. The three gentlemen in that meeting said, alright, we'll talk about all this, go back to your board, see if they're interested in giving you permission to continue the talks. If they are, we'll go to bullet points and issues, if they're not, then we're gonna want to meet again.
And I don't have a problem, I mean, I, I can appreciate that, but like I said, I think there's other folks that probably need to be involved in those talks, and I would have nothing that would have.
Absolutely, but that's why I'm asking, are we there? Or if not, we'll just squash it today and move on, but if we're there, then yeah, we need to bring in Harris, we need to bring in the chief.
I, I, I think that the committee is the way to get it started, and talk sort of some of the very basic things, and then come back for a workshop and public discussions, because the key pieces are already delineated in our budget and in their budget. We talked, we all talk about it every year, so that, uh, get the fire chiefs together, I'll be glad to participate, Mr. Curtis, I'm sure will. And we can at least come up with a list of things that we need to discuss on both sides, and bring that back to the board.
We can start it from anywhere. Higher now. I'm good with it, I'm very good with it.
I, I, I'm, I'm fine, I mean, I, uh, I think Commissioner Lynn's fine with moving forward, having some discussions, I'm just asking a little caution, we need to keep gloves with it, because I think it's the first time in history that I know about it, we ever had the whole board here except for one person that was out sick, or counsel, excuse me, and, and we made some hemorrhages on trying to do some things for the city, and I just, I don't wanna see it all just come apart on us, I just, just nice and slow and to a.
We just, that came up, and they, because that happened the night before that I met with those guys. And, uh, they were very appreciative of the olive branch that we extended to them on paving Palm and Eva, I believe.
Palm and Eva.
Palm and Eva, so, yeah, I don't wanna, we took a good step to the last Tuesday, definitely don't wanna come in there as a bulldog or a hostile takeover, it's like, hey, Bill.
Well, we got the wrong person going then, don't we?
I'm not looking for a takeover, I'm just trying to figure out. Mires was together, I mean, really.
Are you turning pillars over there?
No, I, I'm just kidding with you though, seriously, I, I think you got, I, I think you got the best interest of the community at heart, I'm just saying, like you're saying, and y'all had a discussion there, but, uh, we finally, I mean, and I'm, this is my fourth year, we've done absolutely nothing, Mr. Clyde can tell you, it's been years and years, and nothing's happened except arguing and bickering, and uh, big personalities and nasty compliments, and we, we got by that, and I, I mean, just
I don't wanna start it out like that.
Just slow and steady and, and, you know, even.
And any of those council members at all over there, I mean, and that's why I'd wanna make sure they knew the conversations that were being had, because, you know, I, I wasn't in it, but I seen it, and what he went through, and
I think their administrator has hinted to some of them that he was, that they're kicking us around.
Well, and I, I think too, even if you got one or two, maybe not completely in support of it, that if, if they see the county working hard and the rest of the city, that they kind of feel respectful to them and their concerns of whatever, however they don't want it, that, you know, they, they, versus this is just the way it's gonna be, you know? So, I, I'm, I'm good, I'm not, I'm always gonna be in support of trying to do better for people, but I just, we finally got there in that last meeting, and it's, uh, just be careful, that's all I'm saying, just.
I'm doing, I understand, I, I agree.
Just want to keep the good relationship going forward.
So we have consensus for Mr. Land to continue talks, I guess, with the city of Bible.
Mr. Harris, raise your hand.
Yeah.
All those. I think that's the best idea was for you guys and make sure we're prepared for we have next discussion again.
I will say, as a matter of history, it was actually Councilman Nixon at the time that started the conversation. And we were responding, so that question didn't come later, well, who started this? Is the county trying to take, no, we weren't trying to take anything over. We were responding to a request for information on whether or not we could do it, and so how.
And I think that's a great point. I don't want anybody thinking Commissioner Land's trying to come in and take over. I think from what I'm hearing, you say the city, you were approached.
Yeah, I approached the city, but they were like, I'm glad you came, we didn't talk
So we're all good with that. And along to Mr. Harris, anything you think tonight? Christopher Fleming? Ford? Close comments?
Oh, no, just, after all that we've been through and just stayed here, you know, January, February, March, all of us. And I shared with Commissioner Land, that he's the youngest, youngest commissioner in here, very energetic. Very, very energetic. We had, we had, the month of January, we had some great meetings, starting out tonight, another great meeting this month, another great meeting. I hope we can end it, that there's peace and harmony, we all get together, if something happens, if something really happens, you know, we'll be sorry, but I'm just glad to be here tonight and, and live up to living God, you know, got things that happened in the past, and last month, ready to press home and, uh, just get shit right and just move on, let's go on. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Pravat, did you want to say something?
No, sir, I was just leaning up so that I could actually see your face past Mr. Fleming.
Mr. Stapleton?
The forums, did you finish your closing, did you want to?
I was going to bring Jimmy up when I did my.
Oh, that's fine. I'll let y'all talk about that, but I really still have just a loss for words for my very own Mandy, County Hearts, all the heartsbreak that her, what she's going through. And the loss of a child, there's just no words. I just, seems like every time it comes to a meeting, we're talking about somebody that something's just happened to them, it's just unbelievable. Just breaks my heart for somebody that, as all you board members know them, you called the problem, now young lady works so hard, diligently, to make it with a lot of heroes, and to see what she's going through, I kind of just breaks my heart. That's all I got.
Mr. Sir.
I just echo what Commissioner Stapleton, Commissioner Burris said, just continue praying for Mandy and her family and Patrick's family and Nina, also son, just tough month, tough few weeks, we'll get through it. I've been always very easy, but keep on keeping on.
Thank you, sir.
I definitely echo, there's been word that was spoke there, I think we were all there at the services for Mandy's daughter, and I tell you, I cannot even imagine, I'd be praying for Miss Nina and Patrick and his family as well, but I tell you guys, just how short life is. Tuesday morning, excuse me, Thursday morning of last week, I talked to a customer on the phone at 8:15 in the morning, he placed an order with me. I said, man, it's going to be an hour or two before we get out there, we got no drivers. He said, just any time before lunch. Driver gets out at 11 o'clock, that guy's dead, part of that. That's how fast it happens. So just don't take anything for granted. I know we get up here and we have these meetings, and it seems like sometimes in the public side that we go at it, but I do want the people to know, the community to know, I think we all have the interest of the community at heart, and when we leave here, we don't carry burdens, we move on for short, at least I do. And I just commend all of you guys, and I thank the community for coming, we're starting to get, which I know food's still a thing, but I appreciate the folks who come out and support us and try to understand what we're doing up here and help us make the decisions as best for the community, so.
Thank you, Lee. Mr. Norris, I'll come up, I saved him for last, so I could shut him off if he got.
I was trying to talk long enough, he would get discouraged.
Well, we, I offered opportunity for either one of these childrens to give this update, but they voted time. So we were Tallahassee local candidates, and I do very much appreciate, you know, White and Commissioner Stapleton for going on with me. It's a pretty big undertaking, quite honestly, they could tell you, I mean, we're representing, you know, the tourism side as well as the development side, and a lot set up, a lot of carry packed up and due, and, but it was a really good event, we met a lot of great people, and I want to thank these guys back here, some of our engineers were there with us representing as well.
That's notable.
Do we, we do have a continuing source contract with.
Yeah, they billed us for that time.
Exactly. I was just.
And I was.
It seemed like, my eyes went, it seemed like they were wearing around a Hamilton County hat, how much would you spend?
Oh, in that case, we're going to have to cut their pay.
Yeah, I mean.
Hey, only one half.
Yes.
Well, we didn't have a Swan County hat, which one's available?
Yeah, well, you know, with the prices we had to pay, we couldn't afford to give them, so, but I do really want to thank them, because they remember they're supporting rural counties as well, and, but we had a good time, we met, we met a lot of good folks, we got to speak with, you know, of course, the representation that we're losing, which was unfortunate, but we also got to speak with the representation that we will be acquiring. And they do want to visit us here in Swan County, and we got to go to the governor's club and discuss business with some folks, and I'm not sure how many will do business with us now after Commissioner White embarrassed them all, and basically told them he wasn't paying any fees that they wanted to charge us. Whatever fee they threw out, he offered them half of that, so, but I think, I think it was a good event, and if these guys want to add to it, I mean, please do.
They noticed Swan County was there.
Yeah, whenever they shut it down, they tell you, you got to leave, you, you did your job, right?
The chairman's carrying the big stick around over there.
That's why they don't let country go to town very often.
And I should warn you, he invited three different people to come to our next meeting to do a presentation, so.
I have no reflection.
So we're going to have a stacked agenda next time, but we did talk to some good folks in Swan County as well represented, and we appreciate the support of the community, and we hope we did a good job, and, you know, we're glad, and I want to thank you guys for being there as well.
How many, how many counties is roughly in that now, as far as the rural thing, do you know?
In total rural, there's 32, in our region, there's 14, but in all of the layos in the state, there's 32.
I was just saying about how many, just so people kind of get visual, I mean, it's outside event, you set up tents that has like your logo, county logos on it with back rocks, but I just want to commend Jimmy in his office, it was, I mean, ours looked good. Ours is probably the best looking one now. I mean, Jimmy went over there the first year when we hired him, didn't have anything but a table, full table, and he worked hard to get some stuff from Swan County.
We, the first year, we had to steal some bricks from around the trees over there to hold stuff down, because it kept blowing away, and we didn't have much of anything. But it was the board that supported us and as well as T and C as well, to invest, to get, so that when we go somewhere, that we represent Swan County to the best we can, and I, you know, I appreciate that. We look very professional, I thank you.
Really, really professional, and had so many things to give away, I mean, it's just your tables are set up, and you got different things from Busy Bee, from Pilgrim's Pride, from.
Bender Holtz, Ash Grove, a lot of our big business was the Riverwood College, so we tried to get a, you know, kind of a smattering for the whole community, business community, and then on the tourism side as well, we had a lot of, you know, the tourism pieces as well that was there with us, so it was a lot of work, but I think it was worth it, especially when we got to speak to Senator Ozley and Representative Schoeff, and of course, those people that would be with us moving forward more than likely. So we even had a conversation with, you know, we tried to convince the governor to come over, so we'll see how that works out.
But I do want to commend you all, but it's like, they did look top notch and probably the best looking ones there, and it was really, it was a good time, we had a lot of fun, and like you said, met a lot of people, and I really enjoyed that.
Mr. Chairman, what type of candy you had there?
Crown and county.
That's why I'm only.
We fired him too, then.
Well, I was just bringing it so I could give it to Jimmy so he'd understand what we need next time.
All I need is money, that's all I need. I get hats and pins.
We getting some hats.
Yeah.
All joking aside, I mean, and you're right, Commissioner Stapleton, having a presentation of a presence there, and the other things that you and your staff has done, you can admit with some folks, and if you, to be able to turn on a TV and to start showing some of the tourism tapes and the things that we have to offer, it's impressive. I mean, you know, a lot of us, we overlook it, we see it every day, we take it for granted, but when these folks are coming to our community to open a business and bring people in and to move here and live here and be part of the community, that goes a long way, having those resources.
Well, it's just informative to talk to those other counties while you're there and find out what they're doing, what's going on in your county.
How many vehicles are there?
Well, and like Baker County had that, what was it, 8.1 million square feet hydroponic grow house, I mean, that was an impressive, impressive deal to look at.
How much did they have to pay to get there?
19 million.
I'm just saying, that's how you get a business, so.
It's an $800 million investment.
Yep.
But it's, it was interesting to see that and to talk to other counties and, you know, find out what they're charging for fire and for garbage, and, you know, just a myriad of things to ask while you're there, and it's, they're all in one spot, and it works real good, so I enjoy it. I appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll have to, just need a motion in the chair. Oh, for a motion. Motion by Christopher Stapleton, second by Mr. Fleming, all in favor?
Thank goodness we didn't have to leave out trouble about going.